Good morning, this is Richard Haye here for Zenny 62. I'm at the Oklahorena for a JPA meeting this morning. They should be discussing the Raiders lease extension. Sorry, it's drizzling here, so having a squint and maybe my camera might get a little water on it. But uh, so I'm up here about to go in. Hopefully this rain stops, it's been, hasn't stopped raining really in about two months. Alright, so let's see what's going on here. Morning, they open yet?
Not yet.
Alright, I was just hanging out waiting. Doesn't even look like they're set up. Let's check the doors here. Nothing yet, so. Hurry up and wait, so it's a pretty gnarly day today. Uh, the rain's not as heavy right now. It's a, what's the word, drizzly? It's a light rain. It's really messing up my baseball plans. But hopefully, hopefully it stops soon. Now, uh... Just gonna take some cover here while we wait for them to open the doors. So, uh, not sure what to expect, uh, once this all goes down. They could come in and immediately go into closed session. They, they rarely ever speak on, uh, the Raiders issues openly. They could make a decision just to go with it. Apparently there's a bit of, uh... I don't know what the word I'm looking for is. They don't agree on this whole thing yet, it could be held up a little bit longer. Um, they could just say screw it and get it done with today. It's, it's just all about how froggy they're feeling. I don't know the, the issue at hand, uh, what, uh, what's delaying, uh, signing the lease, but, um, apparently lawyers are doing lawyer things. So we're just gonna, just kinda wait and see, this could be a very uneventful, uh, livestream. But, uh, I don't know if they're gonna talk about any other issues, um, that's up to them. Uh, but I think, I think this is clearly only the Raiders, uh, lease issue. Just gonna kinda poke around, kill some time here. Never really noticed this. Guess, uh, usually when I'm here, I'm looking at other things, but have the, the bricks. I wonder if they'll do this at the, uh, new A's stadium? Where you can, uh, buy a brick to help fund the whole thing? Usually it's a few hundred bucks or a thousand dollars and, you know, they, you get your name on a brick. Uh, I will surely be one to do that. I knew that, uh, there was a, uh, there was a petition going around, uh, about when, uh, they're trying to get the A's to stay here and then, uh, at one point with the Raiders where it was, uh, you know, hey, help fund whatever by buying a brick. So, there are people here. They're parked here. Um, they just haven't opened the doors yet. I don't know if they're waiting for tickets, I don't know. Oh, they also have like a, a donor wall. That's pretty cool. Still nothing. Who's watching, got anything to say? Let's interact here. What's up, Zenny? How's the weather back home? Oh, oh, a blue spot, a blue spot, that's good. So there's five, five people watching and Zenny's the only one saying hello. See what this guy's doing. So what do you do here? Yeah, wait to see what's going on here. Uh, I didn't, I don't even see chairs set up in there.
For what?
For a JPA meeting.
Oh, I think, isn't that somewhere else?
Uh, I, I, I hope it's here.
Some lady just came in here a minute ago and said she went that way though.
Uh-oh.
Well, I don't know, couldn't tell you.
I say, cause I see all their cars lined up over here.
And I know it's all locked up, I'm waiting for security.
Yeah, um, I don't know what's really going on here. Yeah, the doors are locked. Cause I did try them, I'll try them again. I'll give them a good pull. Put my coffee down here. Yeah, that door's... Door's locked, um, I don't know if there's a, another spot here. There's a guy in there, I don't know what he's doing. All set up down here, I don't even see chairs and tables. Not unless they are just going into, uh... Don't know if they're just gonna go into closed session only or if, uh, there's, um, gonna be any public access. Waiting to see. It's a pretty weird light today, very bright. See, I shaved my head and... And reflecting all the light. Guess there's a, people waiting for tickets or something. Just gonna hang out and wait here. Oh, I hear, I hear noise. So that's a, uh, that's a good sign. So we're just gonna hang out and wait, see what happens. Leave Zenny called Scott to, uh, let us in. See what happens. Down the door, there's somebody in there. I don't know what he's, what he's doing, he's just hanging out there. I hear stuff banging around, somebody's coming this way. I don't, I don't know what he's, uh... If he's just leaving or if he's coming to see who I am. Got my coffee. You see anybody inside? For the JPA meeting? Where's that? Around the other side, alright, I'll stick here for a second, see what's going on. That's just a worker guy. He was the guy I saw hanging out, waiting. Ah shit. Hang it, that door locked, oh, who's this?
Is he here for A's?
These are A's.
No, he's not here, right?
Oh, he's not here yet?
No, no, he's not even coming over here, I'm saying, he's at the other side.
I have no idea.
I wonder if there's another entrance for this meeting, because that door locked before I can get in there. We'll figure this out. Oh great, those people, you know, those are A's people. It's a key card. No, he wasn't holding the door open for me, he was a worker leaving. Uh, if you saw his foot, he was actually trying to kick the door shut. There's nobody in there though, that's the thing, like, uh, usually when you, when I've come to these meetings before, they'll have, uh, some chairs set up, there'll be a sound guy, uh, with a PA system. The kid who asked me when it opened, the guy who came out? Because, uh, that was something else. There's this door over here, this is the A's office, that's, that's not anything to do with the JPA. Hey, do you know, uh, the meeting? This is, nobody's, nobody's inside. Uh, yeah, this is locked, I'm trying to, there's supposed to be a meeting today and I don't see anybody in here. I don't know if there's another entrance, I'm gonna go ask over here. There are a bunch of cars parked up here in the circle. There's a door open over here, so I'm gonna check this out. Oh yeah, there, that was Larry Reed right there. Uh, and security just let him in.
You're not the guy that needs to get in, you're not the teletext, are you?
Uh, oh no, um, I'm, I'm here for the JPA meeting though.
Over there, the, where everyone's going in.
Oh, okay, thank you. I at least got some good information here. Is that Larry Reed, I don't know. Hey there, uh, are they gonna open up the other side for the JPA meeting?
No, who are you?
Oh, sorry, uh, my name is Richard Haye, um, I'm, I, I'm covering the, uh, meeting for Zenny 62, um...
The media part is audio.
They, well, it didn't start. Where was that? So... Oh yeah, yeah, thank you.
Good morning.
Hey, we were gonna cover the, the JPA meeting and...
Oh, I apologize, so you're from, uh...
Zenny 62.
Oh, Zenny, yeah, no, I'm sorry, the meeting started in the conference room.
So they didn't even have a, a thing?
They didn't start over there, and so what they did is they, it was just, um, roll call, open forum, straight to closed session. There's not any meetings this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, unless they come back and have something to report.
Alright.
Hello, everybody was over there on this side, I know who you are.
Yeah, we were just waiting on the side there.
Um, I guess you can catch them when they come out?
Yeah, they're gonna be coming out this way.
Um, Scott probably will, but they all probably will come out this door. They probably will, they're not gonna go back this way because they didn't start over there.
Right, I didn't see anything set up over there like they normally have.
No, no, so I tried to highlight, so this is all media out here, huh?
Yeah, I guess so.
And they're like, okay, what, what time are we getting started?
Yeah, nobody, nobody seemed to know what was going on, there was people waiting by the other door.
Okay, okay, well, yeah, you can catch them when they come out and you probably get them one-on-one and...
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, we'll see what happens, thanks. Will do, Zenny. By the way, Zenny says hello.
Oh, tell Zenny I said hi!
You can tell him hi right there!
Well, I, Zenny miss you, you must be at your mother's.
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
Well, okay, well, we went to the wrong door, I, I've never gone through this door, so, uh, I went to the other side. So we're just gonna kinda wait and see, um... I kinda thought maybe because they went to, uh... Because there was no door, you know, none of the stuff was set up. Normally when you go down into the meeting, uh, they have a bunch of, a few rows of, uh, seats, they'll have, uh, the tables for all the board members and with their names on it and everything and then, uh, there'll be a sound guy and stuff and I, I clearly see that that area, uh, was not set up. And then, uh, I saw a couple people scooting in on that back door. Uh, I... And, and there's a couple familiar faces I saw run over there and, uh, figured I'd go there, then now I, now there's other news guys showing up, now there's a camera guy and, uh, a few other people milling about here. Some familiar faces. Yeah, so there's... It's like, they already started, I'm like, wow, wait. So, uh, I'm gonna stick around here, uh, if, if anything happens, I'll, I'll definitely come back. This could be a fast meeting, could be super short. See what... See if I can go back and look at the live chat. Yeah, suddenly it's very active now, like, I didn't see anybody here except for a, a couple concert goers, uh, waiting for tickets and now, now there's a bunch of people waiting, more people showing up. So... Mobile weather lab, I'll tell you right now, look up, it's raining. So there's, everybody just parks up here. Do you get any baseball fans here? Just, just wanted to, uh, see if anybody was, uh, checking out any of the Aviators stuff in, uh, Las Vegas. I know we're supposed to hate on Las Vegas because of the Raiders, I mean, is that what we're supposed to do? But, uh, I was excited when the A's did the, uh, the triple A deal with, uh, with Las Vegas and they, uh... That brand new ballpark, which looks really cool, it's, uh... I sw, I went by there, uh, a couple months ago when I went to go see my dad and, uh, it was a really nice ballpark. Um, trying to get into some better light here, I'm, I'm glaring today, um... But, uh, yeah, so I, uh, I'm gonna go visit my mom in Las Vegas, uh, for opening day at the ballpark, but I went to go buy tickets last night, or, or yesterday, uh, apparently they sold out in, uh, game one sold out in about, they said three minutes, um, trying to find it, there we go, this is a lot better. Sold out in about three minutes and, uh, the, uh... They, they immediately went to StubHub and berm seats, which were like fifteen bucks, uh, for any other game, uh, were suddenly selling for over two hundred dollars, um, which is kinda funny because this is exactly what people said would happen, was, uh, when something... When something like this is gonna happen, you're gonna get a bunch of, uh, uh, what do you call them? Uh, StubHub guys, people, uh, ticket resellers and scalpers who are going to flood the system, take all the tickets and, uh... And then resell them and make it, uh, really hard for people to, to, uh, to go. Look behind me, at what? But, uh, as far as, uh, so when I saw that, I immediately thought about the Raiders, uh, going into Las Vegas and you're gonna have... If you're having triple A tickets selling for a hundred times their value or, uh... I'm sorry, uh, you know, a hundred percent overvalue, five hundred percent, uh, in this case, a thousand percent, uh, you can only imagine what's gonna happen with an NFL game. So, uh, any, anybody with, uh, delusions of going to Las Vegas on the cheap to go see the Raiders is, uh... Anybody thinking they're gonna go see the Raiders on the cheap is, you're sadly mistaken. Um, you're gonna start seeing those, uh, Southwest deals, I don't know why this is blowing up so much. Trying to get into like a little bit of shade, there we go, um, yeah, but you're gonna see those Southwest deals just demolished, uh... You know, you're gonna find those Vegas weekends aren't gonna be quite as easy and you're, you're sure to see those hotel rooms, go up quite a bit, but I'm, I'm excited, I'm, I got game two tickets and then, uh, I, I paid fifteen dollars for those, um, and for pretty decent seats, um, I met a woman who, uh, has season tickets, um, and she's right behind home plate, um, so I'll, I'll probably hit her up, uh, sometime this season to, uh, snag a couple games from her when I go visit my mom in the summer. I, I don't know about, uh... I don't know about Las Vegas in the summer, um, that place is pretty hot, um... And then, uh... But it's a triple A team, it's, triple A games are, are cheap, um, I go to the Stockton Ports games, those are double A, you know, I mean, you can sit behind home plate for twelve bucks, uh... And it's a fun game, um, it's, it's a nice stadium, it's right on the water, sometimes I wish I had a boat. If I had a boat, I would, I would straight take it all the way up, the little river there and, uh... And, and, and park it and, and go watch the ports at Banner Island Ballpark, um, it's a cool little spot. If you like hockey too, uh, they have, they have a, uh, a minor league team, uh, I think it's the Stockton Heat. Um, they, they play the San Jose Barracuda, uh, a few times a year over there, but it's a cool little spot, um... But, uh, the, the, the ballpark that they got going in, in Vegas is, looks pretty amazing, um... And, uh, my sister lives like five minutes away, so, uh... Take us back over the boat? I, I'm, the... Yeah, um, what, what about the boat? Oh, to the board? I, I'm, your, your message is, uh, like truncating Zenny, so I'm not really seeing the whole thing. You taking back over here? Yeah, I'm, I'm, it's like right behind me, so if, uh, if anything happens right here, I'm, uh... Boardroom door. Right here, this is where I'm at, Zenny. Is, uh... Not a whole lot going on. Still just, uh... Still just people just hanging out. I'll get out of his shot. Oh, about that, uh, Southwest Hawaii thing, um... I, I got the email and I immediately started plugging in dates, I mean... It was like, uh, fifty-nine dollars or something like that, sixty-nine dollars for one-way. I, I would be, I would, I went online and I, I started plugging in dates and I, as soon as I would get, I couldn't even get my information in there before those flights were gone, they were super quick, I ended up with nothing. Um, you could still get a one-way for probably in like the hundred and fifty dollar range, but, um... Man, I totally slept on the, uh, the Hawaii deal. Yeah, and he's like, you can go to Maui or, uh... I thought something was going on behind me here, uh, you can go to Maui, Honolulu, there was, there were four different spots with, uh, varying, uh, dates of, uh, operation, but, um, out of Oakland for, for sixty, seventy bucks, I mean, that would have been amazing had, had I, uh, had that opportunity, uh, but yeah, they went by quick, um... I, I fly, um, Southwest domestically, um, just because, one, I have a, a, a Southwest credit card, um, through Chase, um, and they just give away the, the points or the miles for just ridiculous things if you, uh... Yeah. Bye Jeffrey, nothing going on yet. Yeah, just a lot of people just hanging out and waiting. There's a little bit of blue. That's nice to see. Yeah, but I'm, I'm gonna keep an eye on uh, on those South, those uh, those, those Southwest dates, cause uh, like I said, I have the Southwest card and uh, it's super easy to rack up miles. Like if you go to, they'll do deals with uh, uh, hotels. If you get a hotel, uh, they'll, they'll give you like four times the, the points and stuff. There's just ridiculous things. So and it's like, if I could have snagged one of those uh, those Hawaii flights, it would have cost me like, like four thousand points, which is nothing. Drop in the bucket. Could have gone for damn near free. But uh, yeah, it didn't, it's not raining at all right now. It's uh, I don't know if you can see in the, in the puddles here. Uh, it's not raining right now. Uh, it's raining, it's, it, it comes and goes. Somebody's driving through here. Um, anyways, so, so where we're at right now, uh, we're, we're at the Oracle Arena, waiting for the JPA meeting to happen here. Um, it is happening. Uh, we got here, it went immediately to closed session. There was no public uh, forum. Uh, they didn't put, you know, chairs or anything. Uh, there was no uh, there was no talking before. I, I don't, who was the guy who just went in? Uh, he was another media guy. Um, who's been out here waiting. Uh, I think he's from Channel Five. He uh, yeah, I, I'll, I'll try and catch his name. Um, but uh, he's, he's a, I think he's Channel Five. Channel Five is the only news van that's out here right now. So I, I'm assuming that's the reporter. I've seen that guy on TV before and I can't remember his name for the life of me. Um, yeah, so we're here at the JPA meeting. They're meeting in closed session. Uh, they're not expecting a a uh, a statement, but it could happen. Um, we don't know what's happening in there. Yeah, forget media names in the competition. Yeah. You know, it's funny, it is, somehow you know a whole lot more than those guys, Zenny. And they're supposed to be the guys who know stuff. Um, but they only know what PR people and officials who are guided by PR tell them. I've worked in the media business for over twenty years, uh, as a photographer and uh, working with publicists and, and stuff and you'd be surprised how much of the stuff that you think you know is, is absolute garbage. It's uh, it's, it's a, it's a to put it in, in the easiest terms, it's a lot of people shining a lot of turds. Um, they just, this is what we want to say. This is the public uh, opinion, opinion we want them to have and uh, you know, this is what we want you to think, you know. Um, so, you know, they're spin doctors. It's like every time you see a politician um, and they say something, um, you'll have one people spinning another way and then you'll have their own people try and uh, make themselves look good. Um. Yeah. We gotta. Hello? I'm in the way here. These are not board members. How's it going? Just waiting too, huh?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what, if you heard what he said coming. He was like, I was like, you're just waiting too? He's like, yeah, I'm just, I'm stupid enough to agree with it. Well, the guy is uh, getting his camera out here. Oh, he'd went inside and uh, he was coming out. I'm like, still waiting and he's like, yeah, he's like, I was stupid enough to agree with it. Um, I guess he's not uh, happy about his assignment for this. Um, but they got their, their camera back out, so he's, he's coming back. Are they expecting something to happen?
Oh, I'm expecting them to uh, nod and maybe wink, you know, and say we've gone over. I, I, I'm, I'm here to see if something
Actually happens.
Or if something unexpected happens. I mean, if there's a no or questions.
Ah. It's always good. I don't know. We'll go in and see. I'm gonna wait for him to come through that door before I go in. Is that his name, Phil? It's just quiet in here. There's people inside. They're talking. They have a TV going. Can't show too much stuff on TVs. Copyright infringements. Worked for Channel Five?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's your name?
Phil, Phil McHirr.
Okay, that's who I thought you were. I, I know your face. We're doing a live stream. Usually we're down in the meeting, but they didn't do a public public part today.
Oh, they did, they did a short public?
They didn't do it at all. They just came straight in here and went right to it, went to a private session and, and we wait. It's Zenny sixty-two. We've done a live stream. Usually covering these things. There's so much that's said in these meetings, it never makes it out.
No, absolutely.
Oh, Zenny, Zenny says hello by the way. Oh, what we got here? Nothing. Run out here for a second here. Little little stuffy here. Give me a second here. Try not to sneeze all over people. They got it warm in there. Yeah, it's uh, you can see in there, not a whole lot going on. Uh, this is a wide angle lens, so that's a very small room. Um, but I'll keep an eye on that. I can see through here to see the door. So as soon as I see that thing open, I'll go back inside. Yeah, he, he, he had a, he had a bad look on his face. I, I, I don't think he likes his assignment today. Um, like I said, when I saw him come out before, he was, he said that, that he, he, uh, he regretted taking it or something. I, I, I forgot what he said, but uh, yeah, he, he seems a little disgruntled. Um, which I'm sure happens. I mean, probably had great aspirations of sitting behind the desk on the Channel Ten nu- or, or ten o'clock news and, you know, he's instead he's the, the guy who has to go get rained on and uh, you know, cover car crashes or something. Um, not that that's a bad spot to be in. Um, you know, it's funny is uh, I had a friend in high school and uh, his dad also worked for KPIX. Um, Paul Jesky, I don't know if you guys remember that guy. Um, that was a while, while, while ago, probably about twenty years ago. Um, I, he's since retired. Uh, I think he actually passed away. Um, but I used to, I used to play with his uh, his son. We uh, we, we had a, a little music project that we were doing. Um, he went, he went to Berkeley College of Music, which is a prestigious uh, private music school. But I've met a few of these guys. I, I, I run into uh, there's another guy, Dan Ashley. That guy is hilarious. Uh, if you guys ever watched the news uh, on Channel Five, uh, he, he works for them. Uh, I met him through a friend of mine, uh, Jason Becker, who uh, he's, he's a musician and uh, he has Lou Gehrig's disease and uh, he was on the uh, Jerry Lewis telethon, uh, probably about fifteen years ago or so, but uh, those guys covered it and they've covered a few of the uh, Jason's pretty active for being a guy who's completely uh, wheelchair ridden and on a breathing machine. Um, he's uh, he still composes music, which is pretty amazing, uh, given the fact that he can't actually play it and he's had, you know, uh, okay, we got somebody coming out here. Let's go back inside. Hey, anything happening? Oh, up, in and out. Did it say anything? No? Okay. I don't know. Um, usually there's about a dozen people on the, on the board. Um, I don't have the exact number, but there's seven people on the board. You just space them out, but MDC. Yeah, I didn't see how many went in. I wouldn't, I was waiting by the other door with people to come in and I saw, I saw him come through uh, this door. I was like, oh, I'm gonna go over there. Oh yeah, there's eight on the board. Again, I'm gonna keep an eye on that door here. Come back out. Yeah, just right out here outside the door, so I'm keeping an eye on it real quick. But uh, oh yeah, I was telling you guys about Dan Ashley. That guy, it's funny, I was, I've done a couple um, uh, events where uh, he has a band. He's, he's a singer and uh, he does the like rock covers. Uh, it's really funny, cause the guy's gotta be getting close to sixty. Um, and uh, but he has a he dyes his hair. He's like jet black, but you know, like you, you know the guy, you see him on TV and you know, and he's, he's salt and pepper, but then you see him out, you know, playing a rock show in his leather leather pants and uh, in, you know, leather jacket, trying to be the Mr. Cool Guy. Uh, yeah, really nice guy though. Um, and then, you know, I, I've seen him, I've seen him in, you know, one minute doing that and then the next minute he's uh, he's in a tuxedo uh, emceeing an event and then uh, but it's always funny is cause uh, he's like this super rock guy. Uh, so uh, you'll, you'll see him, but he's got a, he's in a nice suit, very nice suits. Uh, but he's got like uh, like skull rings or uh, uh, you know, just, just like, just some over the top rock and roll jewelry or uh, or boots with like uh, studs on them and stuff. He's a, he's a cool guy, like I said, but he's, he's just he'll throw you for a loop if you were expecting Mr. Uh, Mr. News Anchor Guy. Uh, same thing with um, who's the guy from Channel Two? Uh, Frank Somerville. I, I, I run into that guy a lot, uh, playing hockey uh, down in uh, in Oakland. Um, um, my, my kid tries to play hockey. Uh, he's terrible at it, but I, I see him over there uh, playing in the uh, the, the over forty league. Um, he's a cool guy. I like talking to him too. Um, uh, I dig his social awareness uh, stuff that he posts on his uh, his Facebook and, and so forth. Um, which is kinda nice. Makes you, makes you actually have to think about what you think about, you know? We uh, gotta think about some of the privileges that uh, that people have and uh, or assume they have. Just gonna hang out and wait. We got a people just milling about here. Not much happening. Wonder if they let me go inside the uh, Coliseum and see how that's looking right now? Say baseball's about a month away. Oh, I, time wise, I, I'm good. I'm probably more worried about my battery um, than, than anything else. Um. Did anybody watch that Warriors game last night? That was a beat down. They looked really, really soft. Like, like I'm not walking anywhere. I, I pace a little bit. Um, but I'm staying right here. Say that, that Warriors game was whack. They got, what was it, thirty-two points was the I mean, I know, I know they were short clay. I think it was clay that was, I, I, I'm, I'm a little bit out of it. I was, I was, I got really disinterested in that game after uh, they were down like eleven to nothing. Uh, it's uh, man, but that was ugly. They need to do something. Heard they're trying to try and get Bogut back. Um, I guess he has a few things that he needs to do uh, to yeah, it was thirty points was the, yeah, that, that's ridiculous. I mean, I think, I think the Warriors have only had one or two blowout losses in the last couple of seasons and they've had like five this season. I mean, they are not uh, yeah, Boogie's they, they still haven't figured him out. Um, I'm hoping maybe Bogut will come through. Uh, that is just a dude who didn't know where he was going. Um, he, he appears lost. Yeah, he, he, he walked away. Yeah, I'm right here. I'm right next to it. Yeah, I'm right here. I'm right next to it. Yeah, I feel bad for the... There was a bunch of kids I know who went to that game last night and I feel bad that that's the game that they spent a lot of money to see, even with a discount. Even with like a big group discount, you're still gonna pay a hundred and twenty bucks for a... A hundred and twenty bucks for discount tickets and the nosebleeds on the... On the goal end. It's... It's, you know, the... Go and think you're gonna go and watch a good Warriors game and see a beat-down like that. Yeah, I'm sticking around. Maybe me being outside keeps them from staying locked up in there too long. Oh, is he really? I'm gonna go back in. Oh, there's activity. Hey, guys. Any word?
We have our official guy.
Alright. Hello? No. No comment. Is that Chris right there? Oh, Chris Thomas. Was that him just went by? He just gave him the no comment. He's not saying anything. This one went to his car. Sorry, I don't know these guys as well as you do, Zenny. So I apologize for that. Gotta get that shot if I'm driving away. Hey there. Just a public comment?
Well, what's the status?
Well, we spent some time going through all the details of the prospective agreement and we still have one rather significant open issue. And I will be going back to the Raiders to discuss that with them. And hopefully we'll be able to resolve it then. And if we can't, there's a possibility that we won't have a deal.
What's the open issue?
I'm not gonna comment on the particulars of the issue. I want to sit down and talk to Mark to be honest.
Is it an issue on their end, Scott, or is it...
Pardon me?
Is it an issue on the Raiders?
On the Raiders' end or is it on the JPA's?
It's an issue for both of us. On both of us. It requires agreement by both of us and we have a difference of opinion.
And this could sink the deal?
This could very likely put us in a position where there's not a deal.
What's the deadline?
Well, in order to get this approved by next Friday on the fifteenth, we need to have this agendized and ready to go by next Tuesday. So we're gonna have between today and next Monday or Tuesday to resolve it, one way or the other.
Can you discuss any direction from the board today? That been a closed session?
The board gave me the direction that I wanted and I felt like we needed to go and I will communicate that to the Raiders just as soon as I'm done with you.
Can you give us a broad outline? What is the deal minus this glitch? Can you explain it?
Well, it's pretty close to what's been reported on in the press. We're taking the rent up and we're retaining the naming rights for ourselves. We are resolving the parking dispute to our satisfaction. And clearly, I will say, on the business terms of this deal, we're ninety-five percent there. But there is this one big issue that we need to get worked out.
You say raising the...
Will taxpayers be making money off this deal?
Yes.
How so?
Well, the rent's going up, the retention of the naming rights. This will be probably the best financial deal for the taxpayers in terms of a tenant-lease relationship that we've ever had.
How much are the taxpayers gonna make off if it goes through?
Well, if it's projected on the numbers we've put together, it would be somewhere around two to two and a half million dollars of net. And we have been losing about one point seven or one point eight on the Raiders up to this point. So it's a pretty significant turnover.
When's the next meeting with the Raiders?
I'll be on the phone with them soon as I'm done with you gentlemen today.
So when could you have it resolved?
I'm hoping that we'll have an answer from them by later today or tomorrow about how they feel about this open issue.
When you said raising the rent, Scott, is that on top of what was initially offered? The seven point five million for the 2019 season?
That's not...
Is this something that you think can be worked out satisfactorily? Or is it a tougher...
Well, we're hoping so, but there's a chance that it may not. It's hard to tell. Like I said, I'm hoping so, but I'm not sure. Till I get back to them and walk through complications from our perspective on this, it's hard for me to read... It's hard for me to predict, okay? I've said to all of you and everybody's, I think, has been quite good about this. We're not there yet. There's i's to be dotted, t's to be crossed and we're trying to make sure that we've done this and we've done it right. Keep in mind, the complexity of this is not only removing parts, but it's that when the Raiders leave after this, they're gone. So we need to be absolutely certain that we've done this right.
Is this my resolve on specific issue? Is it something that's been kind of airing all along?
When did this come up?
It was, it was initially brought to our attention on Friday. And...
From the Raiders?
From the Raiders.
What about the training facility in Alameda? Have you guys been discussing what happened?
Well, they're entitled to use the training facility.
Thirty-six months to sell on it?
For thirty-six months and they pay rent on that. Now, the training facility, the way the language is that the training facility was to be made available to them if they weren't playing football here in Oakland. As a transition. But if they're playing here, such as they have in the past, they can continue to pay rent. And that's part of the seven and a half million. They pay us five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars now for the training facility.
Oakland City Council's not backing down from this lawsuit? Have you heard from the Raiders about what their thoughts?
No, actually, the lawsuit issue has not, it has really not been a big deal. They've accepted the fact, they being the Raiders. They've accepted the fact that the Oakland lawsuit's gonna go forward. And we've made it very clear to them that, you know, we'd like to do a deal with you, but you need to accept the fact that the lawsuit language against the league and the team is gonna move forward. That is not an issue. We're past it.
Okay, so let's say that this issue gets resolved later today. What's the deal like?
Pretty simple with what's been reported on. The rent goes up, the retention of the naming rights for ourselves. The parking dispute gets resolved. It's for 2019 season with an option on the 2020 season. Rent takes another pretty significant boost in the 2020 season, which is once again for the benefit of the taxpayers.
And what happens to our outstanding debt, twenty million dollars, if you're paying off a last Raider deal?
Well, as it currently stands, that's our responsibility.
So we keep paying?
We keep paying.
What is the current debt at the moment?
Do you feel like this outstanding issue is coming from the Raiders or from the NFL? It's trickling down through the Raiders. Do you think it's...
There's a chance that this could be resolved in the next...
We hope to be able to resolve it one way or another. Let's say today is Wednesday. You know, I would really hope that we'd have a definitive answer by all the principals and their lawyers by no later than tomorrow or Friday. I mean, this is gonna be one of these where either it's, yeah, we think we can work it out or it's, no, we can't. This is an issue that we're very convinced that, you know, after we present our position to them, you know, they're gonna sit and think about it for a bit. But it's gonna be one of those where they're either gonna think to themselves, yes, we're willing to try and resolve this, or no, we feel firmly about this and we're not gonna do it with a deal.
What options do they have, Scott, besides Hilton Coliseum?
I have no idea. I mean, I... They've done a lot of shopping around. As you guys know, you've covered that quite nicely. But I really don't have... You know, I'm like the rest of you. They probably could play at Levi's. They could probably consider playing at San Jose State. Stanford and Cal have no interest. Or they could leave the market.
Alright, thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. Zenny says hello?
Take care.
Uh, Scott.
Ah, he's getting information. Well... While Scott was talking, we... Everybody else was escaping out the back door. But I didn't want to break away from that to talk to other people. That was interesting. He scooped him. Yeah, the funny thing is, I don't know who that one guy is. But, you know, there's nobody out here from the networks other than KPIX, who of course shows Raiders games. I mean, we... Of course, they have a vested interest in the Raiders staying in this market. One second, I gotta change my hand position here. So I guess that's a wrap. No news is good news. Oh, yeah, they do feed nationally. But, you know, and I'm sure KPIX is sharing their information with other CBS stations. Excuse me. But, everybody else escaped here. Yeah. Which is funny that you say, that he said it's coming from the Raiders because what I had heard was that this was coming from the city. Where that, that, you know, the city or JPA attorneys were trying to add new language. So, yeah, so this is a new thing. We'll see how it goes. It leaves me to wonder what it is, because it doesn't seem to be a naming rights issue. Doesn't seem to be a money issue, at least not on the rent part. But it's an unknown issue. Or at least, it's a non-public issue at the moment. It'll be interesting to see what happens. I think they'll end up hammering it out. Raiders are running out of time. They're gonna spend the same or double what they're paying here to go play anywhere else. You know, I don't think anybody's in their right mind is gonna go offer the Raiders to play for free in some podunk town. Because the benefits just don't outweigh the costs. It's gonna be expensive for them to go to San Antonio or San Diego or Mexico City or London or you name it, wherever they end up. That's gonna cost. Hammer it out here, give the fans what they want, you know? Seven million dollars is a drop in the bucket, at least for an NFL team, you know? You know, they'll make, raise the beer a dollar, you'll make a couple bucks, okay? I don't know. This is a team, unfortunately, though, that can't get its head out of its butt and figure out how to make money in this market, but everybody else has. I mean, it's ridiculous. Not even the A's are not profitable, you know? It's just weird marketing and weird decisions as far as where to... You know, where to put your money. Like, why would you go to Las Vegas and spend a couple billion dollars when you could have had everything and more here for, I wouldn't even say half the cost. It'd be like a quarter of the cost. If the Raiders were like a publicly-owned team, the whole board would have been outed years and years, decades ago. Just because it's just this weird ineptitude. Every time you think they were doing something and getting on track, they'd do something to kick themselves in the butt. And so, I don't know, this issue that's outstanding, you know, hopefully they hammer it out this week and... You know, hopefully the Raiders will play here one more year, maybe two. I don't see going into Las Vegas for half a season. That seems ridiculous. But, you know, if anything happens, you know, we'll be here. We'll get you the word. And thanks for watching. It's a lot of downtime of just waiting. And so hopefully that was, you know, an answer that was worth waiting for. Alright, you guys. Take care. Have a good day.